I'd like to call the Monday, March 6, 2017 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Hilton.
Here.
Mr. Epley.
Here.
And may I have a report on our, the minutes of our February 6 regular and work sessions and our February 27 work session and executive session, Mrs. Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I've reviewed the minutes from all four of those meetings and I've found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. I have a proclamation to read, and it requires me to wear glasses. And it is, "Whereas April 11, 2017 marks the 49th anniversary of the passage of the United States Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which enunciated a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, national origin, sex, family status, or disability, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only law, but a basic human necessity and an inalienable right inscribed in the Constitution of the State of Ohio as adopted in 1851. And whereas the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center Incorporated is engaged in passionately pursuing its mission to eliminate housing discrimination in the Miami Valley. Whereas the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center and the Dayton Area Board of Realtors are committed to continuing to address housing discrimination in the Miami Valley. And whereas April is traditionally designated as Fair Housing Month by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the theme this year is Equal Housing Opportunity, Integrated Living Creates Vibrant Healthy Communities, in order to highlight the Fair Housing Law Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. Now therefore, by the power vested in me, I, William D. Duncan, Mayor of the City of Oakwood, do hereby urge all citizens to understand and exercise their right to equal housing opportunity and proclaim the month of April 2017 as Fair Housing Month." We now have several special visitors tonight. We have from the Miami Valley Communications Council and our Tactical Crime Suppression Unit, Brian Humphries and Charlie Stegelmeyer. Welcome, Brian, good to see you again, and we will look forward to your report.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for giving us a few minutes of your precious time tonight. We'll try to be brief, but try to also give you enough information so you understand why I'm here tonight. You may recall I was here about two years ago after I started and gave you a brief update of me and what some of the things we're planning on doing. I thought I'd stop by, well, two things. One, I wanted to stop by and just give you an update on some of the things we've been working on. I'm sure Council members, Epley and Stevens, and Manager Klopch have kept you pretty well-informed, but if I could take just a couple minutes to brag and inform, I'd appreciate it. First off, as you know, most of you are aware that our, one of our primary functions is providing the cable access management for your city, including the filming of tonight's meeting. And so we've been a little busy with some of those things. Now, your residents can access this not only on cable, but on Roku. So for those who have Roku streaming service, they can find us on there, just look for MBCC on the listing, and then you can just go from there. So they can see your, not only can they see it on the, on the Internet, on our website, but also now on Roku. We've also installed a new generator that helps to keep two things up, keeps our channels on the air whenever we have bad weather, especially like we normally do in spring. And also it helps keep the Internet operating because we run the Internet for a number of our cities, and so we want to keep the police departments functioning in those storms as well. So we're very pleased with that. It's, we've eliminated a lot of our outages, even the small, short ones, we've eliminated those with that generator. And the last thing that we've been working on is replacing all the cameras in our, in the city halls and the council chambers. We've done a couple so far. We're starting on our third one. Oakwood is the, not the next one, but the one after that. Not only will that update old cameras that need to be replaced, but we'll finally be able to get everybody on HD rather than the standard definition. You'll actually look like real people instead of the old TV images.
Wow, that's a good thing.
Of course, we still have to work the spectrum on, on their broadcasting end of it, but hopefully at least we'll get the signal out and you all look more like, like you're used to seeing people look like on TV. Some of the other things that we do to help our members is that we do a lot of joint purchasing programs, and since I last met, we completed the street lighting bid negotiations. We were able to keep the low bids, the low prices that you all had for your streetlights, and not only that, but instead of a three-year contract, you're getting cost certainty, it's now a 10-year contract. For those cities that did want LED lighting, we worked in, worked that out for them too so they can get a below-market rate for that lighting. I know Oakwood enjoys a different type of light, but you know, we, the nice thing was, like I said, we were able to keep those very low rates with no increase. We also completed the electric generation bids. That's where we bid out the electric generation portion of all the electricity bills that the cities, our member cities get. And we, by going out for that joint bid, we had 26 communities involved with that. We're going to save Oakwood about $13,000 over the three-year life of that contract. So we're pleased about that. We're going out for a pavement markings bid shortly, did that last year with Oakwood and this year again as well. And we're also working on an extended fiber network that will service all of our member cities. You know, it will increase the broadband availability. For those of you who are on Time Warner, we'll just, or sorry, Spectrum, you know, you may be looking at 60 megabytes, we're looking at a gig. And we're trying to be able not only to provide that for, first, we provide for our member cities their facilities, but we're looking at ways to bring that to public use as well. Lastly, just want to remind everybody about our Municipal Training Academy. We've increased our training programs that we're doing for the cities. We've really started to bump that up quite a bit. We're doing a lot more webinars, we're doing more onsite training, and we're trying to increase that all the time. We had, we did have some Oakwood employees take advantage of that last year, and we've seen some so far this year, so again, we're going to try to boost that up. That, it's, by doing that, having this training local, that saves your employees from having to go to Cincinnati, Columbus, wherever, spend a whole day, most of the day traveling and for maybe a two or three-hour seminar. So we're able to do that, and we're going to increase that. So we're very pleased that we're able to offer those services. So that's just some of the things, the highlights that we've been doing. The other thing that I wanted to do, or we wanted to do tonight, I know you are generally aware of what we call the Tactical Crime Suppression Unit, and it's been a long time since there's been presentations made to the individual cities, and we have a relatively, I say relatively, he's been with us now since August, and doing a great job. He's got a lot of experience, over 30 years?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, I always get that mixed up. Thirty-five years in law enforcement, and like I said, everybody's very pleased with the work, and he's doing a great job for you. But anyway, so I'm going to let him do the rest of this presentation, and so my pleasure to introduce the new Director of the TCSU, Charlie Stegelmeyer.
Welcome, Charlie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of the Council. Thank you for taking the time this evening to allow me to come speak to you on behalf of TCSU. As Mr. Humphries said, I'm fairly new as the Director, I've been here since August of last year, and one of the things we wanted to accomplish is, all the cities that belong to TCSU obviously pay money for the Crime Suppression Unit, and we thought it'd be a good idea to come to everybody and say, hey, this is what you are getting for your money. So let me get started here. I promise you, I have a quick slide presentation. I know you have a full docket tonight. Brian Keisman, a really short leash, so I'll get this through in just a matter of nine slides. As you can see, the Tactical Crime Suppression Unit was founded in 1974. That makes it one of the oldest task forces in the state of Ohio. TCSU was founded underneath a mantra, Crimes Beyond Borders, and that in itself made itself a very unique mantra. In 1974, multi-jurisdictional law enforcement was not a commonality. In fact, task force concepts didn't become really famous until 1985 and beyond. So as you can see, you were almost a decade, decade ahead of everybody else in law enforcement when you developed TCSU. Presently, TCSU is staffed with a Director, which is me, I have an administrative assistant, I have three detectives, one from the City of Kettering, one from Germantown, and one from Centerville, and I also have two federal agencies attached to the task force. I have two agents from the ATF, Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Farms, and one agent from the United States Department of Agriculture. Let's see if she works. There we go. So, TCSU, what's made up of TCSU? Presently, we're made up of the following government entities. We have the eight cities, we have Centerville, Germantown, Kettering, Miamisburg, Moraine, Oakwood, Springboro, and West Carrollton, and we partnership with the Miami Valley Communication What exactly does TCSU do for the cities like Oakwood? Well, what we do is we provide quality law enforcement support to all the cities in TCSU, and we do that in several different ways. One such way is through our criminal investigations. We provide support to all detective units and all police agencies when we're investigating property crimes, narcotics, violent crimes, or any other type of investigative support any of the cities may need. Another way we provide support for all the agencies is through our electronic surveillance unit. I have several agents right now that are what I would call classified as experts in the use of electronic surveillance techniques that are out there today. We try to keep ourselves with state-of-the-art equipment such as body wires, body cameras, covert audio and video recording methods, as well as IP-based pole camera systems that we use for surveillance. And this equipment is available to all the TCSU communities. What's another service we provide? Presently, we have a polygraph division, and that polygraph division, I have two people that are in, that conduct the polygraphs. I have Gregory Stout from the City of Kettering, and I have Nadia Dexter from the City of Centerville. What they do for the TCSU communities is two things. They provide pre-employment polygraph services as well as criminal investigative polygraph services, free of charge. What else do we do? As Mr. Humphries told you earlier about beefing up the regionalized training, that was one of my goals as being the Director of TCSU, is to provide quality training for the region at reduction of the price. As we all know, cities are not immune to the budget crunches that are going out there, and we're trying to do more with less. One way to accomplish this is regionalize our training. So I look at things like legal, legal update training, which is something we need every year, our CPT training, which is the required core training that OPADA makes us take every year. We do officer safety training, defensive tactics training, and patrol tactics, all which are very important right now, given the climate of our job. Here's a new thing we just added this year, and I was handed this as I walked in the door. We have a portable drug incinerator program. I walked in the door and they said, congratulations, Charlie, you're now the curator of a drug incinerator. I had no idea we even had this. But what this is, is kind of a unique little item. It's called the Drug Terminator. It is a portable incinerator that you can bring any drugs or any of the properties that you need to dispose of, and you can come out to our task force office, we'll fire this thing up, it's like a jet engine, and it will absolutely pulverize the drugs. What this does is before today, you used to have to take this off-site, and it was generally Indiana or Kentucky that had the incinerators where we could go. That would cost you man-hours and time and money and the gasoline. Right now, you will come up to Kettering where our off-site facility is, and you can use this free of charge to the agencies. The last area, crime analysis. One thing we provide to all the detective bureaus and any other officer that's within the TCSU communities is we do social media, DFAX, LexisNexis, and Hightide Confliction. All this is important in today's social media, and you know that everybody, that's the way everybody communicates now, social media. Very important in how we conduct investigations this day and time. So by having this, it also reduces manpower hours usage at like Oakwood and some of these other agencies. We will conduct that form and pass that information on. As you can see, TCSU is more than just an acronym. We provide a lot of quality law enforcement for a minimal amount of price, and that's what we're all about. Do you have any questions?
Questions for either Brian or?
Yeah, what does LexisNexis mean on that slide you just?
LexisNexis is just a database that we use.
Oh, oh, got it, okay.
It's things we can go down and research anybody's background. It comes here, it does credit checks, where you've lived, cars you've owned, it does a pretty thorough background in anybody we're investigating.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hilton works for LexisNexis.
But I'm actually not allowed to.
Sir, she was worried that this.
Are you investigating her? No, I am not.
Okay, great. I, I was intrigued that you have a Department of Agriculture employee working with you. What does that person do?
First person to ask that question, I've been waiting for this a long time, so thank you for finally asking that. USDA has sole rights to food stamp investigation and food set fraud.
Ah, okay.
Doing a narcotic investigation, that goes hand in hand. We're getting a lot of people that are using food stamp cards to purchase narcotics. I know you find that hard to believe.
I see.
As I do myself, but it's very lucrative. It goes about two or three cents on the dollar for these food stamp cards we traded in the underworld. So we use that quite a bit.
Interesting, okay. Anything else, any other questions?
Yeah, very thorough presentation.
We appreciate that, and one of the things that, you know, is important about the Miami Valley Communications Council, it's a way for the local communities to have regional cooperation. You know, we hear all the time that there's no regional cooperation in this area, that all the cities, you know, fight among each other. It's a total myth. We spend all our time trying to figure out ways to cooperate regionally as well as to save money, and so our investment in MBCC is far outweighed by the benefits we receive. So thank you for coming and sharing that with our citizens.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Next, we have another famous community leader from Sinclair Community College, Madeline Isley, who, for those of you younger people that are here, she's going to talk about Sinclair. She also was the co-chair of our centennial celebration in Oakwood back in 2008, and she lives in Oakwood and jogs by my house all the time. Welcome, Madeline.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. Mr. Klopch, it is indeed my honor to be here this evening to thank you for your support, to thank this community for the way it values education, which is absolutely unquestionable. And in fact, in the fall of 2015, this community supported Sinclair with the levy campaign at 65% of a yes vote. So, which is one reason.
The highest percentage in Montgomery County.
The highest percentage in Montgomery County, thank you, Mayor, for pointing that out. And, and clearly that's why my husband, Rob Drumheller, and I, who live here, one, one big reason. That and the fact that the streets are joggable and walkable, and lots of other good reasons. I'm here this evening on behalf of another Oakwood resident, our president, Steve Johnson, who would have been here this, with me this evening, but he was called to some family business. Interestingly, there are 236 current Sinclair employees who live in the city of Oakwood.
Wow.
So there's a lot of good reason for the city to be supportive of Oakwood, I'm sorry, of Sinclair. I'm going to thank you for your support by way of telling you a few stories. Why is this support of education so important? Well, the Georgetown Center for Workforce and Education has done an analysis, and they have determined that by 2020, 65% of jobs will require some post-secondary education or training, some, some sort of certification, credential, beyond high school. And that, of course, is where Sinclair comes in. So it's big employers, like the ones you see on the screen here, that need institutions like Sinclair to take students from beyond high school, or some of them who've been away and come back to, to prepare for the workforce. For example, 25% of premieres' employees have gone to Sinclair. So Sinclair is a, a big provider of getting people ready for the new economy. So let me tell you just a few quick stories, and if you've got your hand out, you can follow along. We're, we're going to start with the story of David. David actually started at Sinclair in the eighth grade in a Saturday program called Young Scholars. It's a pre-college readiness program. However, after high school, he decided he was going to join the Marines. After a few years in the Marines, he realized, well, he had some other career ideas, and that included becoming a pediatric nurse. So he's at Sinclair now, studying in our Health Sciences Division, and will this fall, and actually fall term, you know, actually starts mid-August, so I almost want to say like summer. This fall, the new Health Sciences Center will open up on the Dayton campus. It's a $31.5 million investment, the newest building on campus, and it will consolidate all 11 of the Health Sciences Departments into one building. Right now, they're scattered over nine different buildings throughout the campus so that students can be educated in the coordinated care model, which is how health care is delivered these days. Let's meet Alexis. Alexis is an example of a student who started at Sinclair right after high school, but then life happened, as is the case with many of our students. So she paused to raise a family, and then she came back, and now she's a student in the Supply Chain Management Program. She's had an internship at ATW Automation, and now actually is employed at Stratocash as a supply chain manager even before she finished her degree. She's going to be finished in May of this year. Supply chain, of course, is a growing industry right here at the crossroads of America, and so she chose her field wisely. While she's finishing her degree, her son, who's in high school, is enrolled in college credit plus programs where it's a relatively new program in Ohio where high school students can earn college credit at the same time that they're still in high school. And in fact, right now, this academic year, in Oakwood, there are 81 Oakwood high school students doing the same thing as Alexis's son, saving themselves money and getting a leg up on, on college. Let's meet Sierra. Sierra is a student who knew that she wanted to go on and get a bachelor's degree, but wasn't quite ready to start at the university. So she enrolled in Sinclair in the double-degree program, which is a seamless pathway right, straight into Wright State. And in doing so, she's been able to gain a very solid footing and knows that all of the classes that she's taking will transfer without any issues as she goes on to finish her bachelor's degree at Wright State. Let's meet John, Jennifer, and Joshua. By the way, Jennifer is an Oakwood resident. Jennifer's an interesting story. She actually has a bachelor's degree in, I think, English Composition, but she loves maps. So she enrolled in the GIS program, the Geographic Information Systems Program, and she earned a short-term certificate. At the same time that she was doing that, she did a service learning project for the Wright Dunbar Village and did a mapping project for them. John and Joshua did a walkability study for the city of Dayton, which the city of Dayton's Planning Department is actually using. So these three students presented those service learning projects to a regional geography conference, and their student presentations beat out presentations from university students. So we like to point out that there's great quality in the programs that we offer at Sinclair as well. Let's meet Kamal. Kamal is a young man who is planning to continue his education with a bachelor's degree, but right now, he is one of our brother-to-brother students, is a peer mentor through the African-American Male Initiative, which is an important program that the, that the college has invested a million dollars in just recently, so that we can ensure that all of our citizens are afforded the right support and the right opportunities that they need to succeed in this region. Let me finish up with Viney. Viney Walker moved to Dayton in her late 70s. She had been a successful businesswoman for about 50 years, had raised her family, but somehow her kids had migrated here and she was in Chicago. They decided she needed to be closer to them. So she got here and she said, you know what, I never got a chance to go to college. She was widowed at a young age, raised her family by herself. So she found her way to Sinclair and just started taking non-credit classes, and she said, gosh, I can do this. So then she started taking credit classes, and last year, she became the oldest Sinclair graduate at the age of 89.
Oh my gosh, wow.
So Viney is an example of how learning is truly a lifelong pursuit. You're never too old to learn. So thank you so much again for, for your support. In the last 10 years, 1,955 credentials have been awarded by Sinclair to Oakwood residents. Of those, 986 have been two-year degrees. This is a, a community that is very much integrated into Sinclair as an institution, and your support is a reflection of that. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Madeline. Any questions or comments?
I don't think so. Great job.
Thank you.
We appreciate your efforts and for all of you youth down here, your parents will love you if you get college credits while you're still attending Oakwood. I've had, I've actually recruited some people that started at Sinclair when, went to Wright State, that graduated in three, three and a half years because they had those college credits that they got in high school.
That's right.
And then they can save that money to help you buy your first home, because that's the new deal.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, let's see, where are we? Okay, we're now to the visitors part of our section, you know, after our special visitors, and so we have a lot of people here that would like to address Council tonight, so if you can keep your remarks, you know, within three minutes or so, let me know what you want to address Council on, and we welcome you. Who wants to be first? If you could state your name and address for the record, welcome.
Good evening. I am Amy Gant from Lulubau, and I have Nina Anglin from the Oakwood Forest. And we are here, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. We're here on behalf of the Shops of Oakwood, and we just wanted to come in and let you know that several of the local businesses are kind of organizing and working together to create a, a venue that we can work together to help build not only great products and services for the community, but to work together as a community, and we just want to let you know that we're starting that process. And we believe that the Shops of Oakwood provide convenient access to products and services that will enhance the living here and further the mission of the goals of the city. We expect to have specific items to discuss with the city seeking your input and support and our plans in the near future. Tonight, we just, however, just wanted to come and say hello and let you know that we are working together and we are collaborating together and hopefully kind of building a community amongst the shop owners so that we have a good forum for communication and promoting and being a part of the community.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have some additional comments?
No, that's good.
Well, I just want to let you know that we consider you like the mayor of the Business District, but, because you do all kinds of great things supporting our Business District. But just this last Saturday, and some of you may comment on this, but we had a new resident breakfast for all the people that had moved into Oakwood, and we had a record number, 135, I think, attended, and one of the things that your group did, we give them a commemorative Oakwood mug, but you, several of you got together and put together some gift certificates for different products in the, in the community, and so all the new residents got that package as well as a commemorative mug. We had the, the, the city staff cooked a breakfast for them, and they got to meet the superintendent, the library person, the Judge Quinn, and all the city council. So it was a, it was a great, we had people that had moved here from Germany and Belgium, and we had at least two dozen that came from west of the Mississippi. I made them just raise hands, but, so we have a lot of new residents, and their very first impression of the Shops of Oakwood was positive.
We'll have to get on that speaking if we could next time.
Okay, that's a, that's a really good idea, yeah. Okay, because I know we had, we had Vice Mayor Byington talking about joining the Oakwood Rotary, so that's, that's a good thing to let, let them know of things they can get involved in.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. And they got that done in three minutes, by the way. Okay. Who else would like to address city? Please come up and, okay. Oh, we have a whole bunch of you, okay. Can you identify your name and address for the record, if you can speak clearly into the microphone so the people at home that are watching you on TV can hear you?
Hi, I'm Sarah Hall.
I'm Lizzie Klopch.
I'm Azalea Beto.
And I'm Julia Neal. We are Girl Scout troop, year 0149.
We are Girl Scout troop, year zero-one-four-nine, and we're working on our Silver Award, which is an award that's to improve the community, and we'd like to put up a plaque honoring our veterans. Our plaque will be a buffer leaf, meaning a plaque with a raised image. We'd like to place it in Orchard Lee Park by the pavilion, but we're open to suggestions.
We plan on raising money by using money from our cookie sales and other means. We would like to put it up by fall of 2017. We are aware that there is another statue honoring veterans on the corner of Patterson and Schaefer. That one is only for World War II veterans, but we would like one for all types of veterans because we feel all are equally as important. We would like to put up this plaque because we feel that we want people to engage in conversation about veterans more often than they do.
We want it to be part of everyday life and conversation, not just on Veterans Day. Also, we want people to think of what they did for us to create life like it is. We would like to represent the Army, Navy, Air Force, Coast Guard, and Marine Corps to honor any service of veterans. We also want to include male and female veterans because they are both important. We want to honor everybody.
We also want to put up the plaque to let children learn at an earlier age what veterans are and what they have done for us. The average age children learn about veterans is six. Most kids learn about it in school. If children learned about it earlier, they could appreciate them more. Thank you for listening. Are there any questions?
Any questions for these ladies?
Do you have any ideas for fundraisers beyond cookies or any kind of things that we can help out with?
We would like to go to local businesses and ask them to help sponsor us. And so we are planning on writing letters and also talking to foundations like the Oakwood Rotary and places like that. And we are also going to use our money from our cookie sales because we opted instead of getting prizes, like most troops, to get money to help us.
Oh, wow. That's a great idea. Okay.
Do you have a approximate cost on what your, a goal of the dollar amount you're looking for?
So we talked to the artist that we were thinking about having do this, and she said if we did, if we used aluminum, it'd be one, a couple thousand dollars, and then if we used bronze, bronze, if we used bronze, it'd be like five thousand dollars.
Five thousand? Do you know how big you're planning on making the plaque?
Mr. Virginia Hess?
I'm sorry?
Oh, how big?
Yeah.
We would like to put it, place it in a rock. So we want our rock to be about two feet tall and three feet wide, but we are leaving the plaque up to our artists because we feel that depending on how much creativity goes into it is how much space we will need.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This sounds like a well-thought-out plan, and to the extent that the city can help you, we will do so. Thank you very much.
Yes.
So who else wants to address council? We have a whole group up here in the front row. You guys are just watching, huh? Okay, cool. Okay. Would you like to come down? Okay, yeah.
Hello, I'm Marsha Kissel. I live at 101 Oak Knoll, and we're continuing our conversation about how to make Oakwood more sustainable. I wanted to very briefly tell you about a meeting I had with Dan Grader from Montgomery County Solid Waste Management and with someone named Michael Greenberg, who works for GT Environmental, a consulting firm that is currently working with Bexley, Ohio, to create a waste diversion plan for their city. So I am going to very briefly outline the plan itself and the benefits for the city. I've sent Jay a grant proposal that I've written up. It's a draft for, to apply for, for this from the county. And I've also sent him a proposal from GT Environmental of what this waste reduction or, I'm sorry, waste diversion, that's the term you're supposed to use, but waste diversion plan could look like for Oakwood. And I want to briefly tell you about the benefits. So GT Environmental works with municipalities to create waste diversion plans that incorporate the interests of residents, businesses, and other institutions that are created to fit a city's particular needs with the eventual goal of zero waste, and the city decides on that goal. And it's very flexible. And Bexley, Ohio, where he's currently working, or his firm is currently working, is similar to Oakwood in many ways socio-economically. It's a little bit larger, but I think that they can be a model for us. Without going into too much detail, I welcome your questions, but the benefits for the city would be, number one, to get together representatives from businesses, large and small, from various communities, from nonprofits, from the local government, and citizens together to work on a project. And this coalition can be used in the future to work on other projects. So it's a really great opportunity to just come together to do something really good for the city. And the other benefit is that it would make us leaders in the state. We would be, certainly in the area, would be the third city in Ohio to develop a roadmap for zero waste, Oberlin and Bexley being the first two. And there are financial, there's financial support from the county. They're very interested in doing this all over the county. There is financial support potentially from Ohio EPA, and there's also Dayton Regional Green who provides support. But I think we have a very good chance of getting this grant, and I hope the city will apply for it. I hope that in the very least, you will read the documents I have sent to Jay and that we can continue the conversation before the due date of March 31st.
March 31st, okay.
Do you have any questions?
Any, yeah, any questions? I know that I have not had a chance to see this document. I've been busy fighting the State House on municipal tax reform, but I know the document exists, and we're going to have Rob Stevens, Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember Epley review it and make a recommendation to us.
Okay, thank you very much. I look forward to hearing from you.
All right, thank you. Who else would like to address council? All right, well, hearing none, we will close the visitor's section of the meeting, and we will go to our legislation. The first item is an ordinance to consider proposed zoning code text amendment, and Vice Mayor Byington will introduce, we introduced it at the last meeting at a public hearing. So you're going to introduce the ordinance for a final vote?
That's correct. As you mentioned, this is an ordinance to enact a new Section 408 of the medical marijuana of the Oakwood Zoning Code. As mentioned, this is the second reading of the ordinance that was introduced at our February meeting. This ordinance would amend our zoning code to prohibit medical marijuana-related businesses and home occupations in the city of Oakwood. The Planning Commission reviewed this proposed ordinance in January. They conducted a public hearing and voted four to zero to recommend approval of the ordinance. It then came before council in February for a first reading and another public hearing. Before both hearings, our law director made a presentation on Ohio House Bill 523, which went into effect on September 8th of 2016 and legalized certain forms of medical marijuana in the state of Ohio. It is now our job as members of council to reflect on the Planning Commission's recommendation, the testimony that we heard last month, and the state of the law as it stands currently, and to consider how these medical marijuana-related businesses should be zoned in our city. With that, I would make the motion for adoption of this ordinance, ask that it be seconded, and then ask that council begin its deliberations and discussion on the matter.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Byington. Is there a second to the ordinance?
Second.
Do we have any other discussion regarding the ordinance? None.
This can be revisited?
Sure, yeah.
As, as federal law evolves?
Yes, I think that was part of the discussion that the Planning Commission had, and some cities are doing moratoriums, but all that's doing is just kicking the can down the road. We, we thought we wanted to do a prohibition now, and if federal law changes or if other circumstances changes, we can always amend our zoning code at a later date.
Very good, thank you.
Exactly. It seems that right now, at the state level, there isn't a lot of certainty as to exactly what they're trying to achieve, so making a determination based on not having all the facts from the state doesn't seem like a good idea for the city of Oakwood.
I concur. Any other discussion? Hearing none, then Laurie, would you call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution of necessity for our 2017 sidewalk repair project. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. This is a resolution declaring the necessity of repairing sidewalks and appurtenances thereto on West Dixon Avenue and certain other streets between certain termini in the city of Oakwood, Ohio, providing that abutting property owners repair the same. This is the annual resolution that is the first step of our 2017 sidewalk curb and apron, driveway apron project. This year's program will cover the west side of Far Hills Avenue and all city streets west of Far Hills. We are required by law to pass three pieces of legislation in order to carry out this program and assess the sidewalk costs. The first piece is this resolution, which declares the necessity of sidewalk repairs in these parts of the city. I will also be introducing as a first reading tonight the second piece, which is the quote ordinance to proceed for the project. We will not vote on that ordinance until our April meeting. After the project concludes, there will be a third piece of legislation, an ordinance to levy assessments for certain sidewalk costs. I move that council adopt this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion regarding the resolution? Hearing none. Laurie, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And now, Mr. Stevens will introduce his ordinance.
An ordinance determining to proceed with the repairing of sidewalks and appurtenances thereto on certain streets between certain termini in the city of Oakwood, Ohio, and providing that abutting property owners repair the same. This is an annual ordinance that, ordinance that is the second step of our 2017 sidewalk curb and driveway apron project. Again, this year's program will cover the west side of Far Hills Avenue and all city streets west of Far Hills. This is a first reading, so I make no motion at this time.
Is there a second? Well, there's no, we don't need a second, so thank you very much. We'll have a second at our next meeting in April. I apologize. So then we have a resolution regarding our 2018 street lighting project.
Yes.
And Mr. Stevens?
Light up the city. A resolution declaring the necessity of improving certain streets between certain termini in the city of Oakwood, Ohio, by lighting the same with electricity. This is another annual resolution that is our first step of our 2018 street lighting program. Like the sidewalk resolution, we are required by law to pass three pieces of legislation to provide street lighting each year. The first is this resolution declaring the necessity of street lighting throughout the city. I will also be introducing as a first reading tonight the second piece, the quote ordinance to proceed for the project. We will not vote on that ordinance until our April meeting. The third piece of legislation, an ordinance to levy assessments for certain street light costs, will be introduced as a first reading at our April meeting. I move the council adopt this resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, I'm sorry, I can't do that. Laurie, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
And now, Mr. Stevens will introduce his ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. An ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement of certain streets between certain termini in the city of Oakwood, Ohio, by lighting the same with electricity. This is the annual ordinance that is the second step of our 2018 street lighting program. It is the ordinance that authorizes the city to proceed with the project. This is the first reading of this ordinance, so I make no motion at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. One thing I'd like to point out to people in the audience is, at the local government level, we deal with issues one by one. We don't throw them all into some omnibus legislation and pass it at ten till midnight the day the legislature's going to expire. So I would encourage, if you meet a state representative or state senator in our town, that they should act more like local government as opposed to state government. And now, our final resolution is a resolution opposing the centralized collection provision in Governor Kasich's budget, and Vice Mayor Byington will introduce that.
Yes, and, Your Honor, and you could not have given me a better segue. This is a resolution opposing the state of Ohio governor's proposed 2018, 2019 budget, which includes provisions for the centralized collection of net profit tax returns and other provisions that are detrimental to local government and that will result in further significant loss of revenue needed to support the health, safety, welfare, and economic development efforts of Ohio's communities. Governor Kasich has proposed a 2018, 2019 biennial budget, and included in the budget bill is language that would institute a state-operated program for the centralized collection of Ohio municipal income tax. This is an action that some lobbying groups and some state officials have long wanted to force on municipalities, but it is a clear attack on the home rule powers that cities are granted by the Ohio Constitution. We strongly believe that local government is the best government because we are closest to the people whom we are accountable to. They are our friends and our neighbors. In ways that the state cannot hope to achieve, cities like Oakwood are better able to provide personal service and assistance to their taxpayers in preparing and filing tax reports and returns. We can verify the prompt and proper auditing of local tax returns to ensure all applicable deductions and declarations are reported and ensure that all taxpayers pay their fair share without causing higher costs of compliance for all. The governor's budget proposal would impose burdensome and costly restrictions and would eliminate the ability of municipalities to audit and correct business returns and to equitably enforce the municipal income tax laws. It would interfere with our ability to monitor and correct employee withholdings. The entire purpose of this budget proposal is to take control over the administrative process of municipal income tax, which will benefit special interest groups and create a new stream of revenue for the state of Ohio, all at the expense of cities. This is not a theoretical discussion about the separation of powers between the state and municipalities. It is a very real issue that has real consequences. The municipal income tax is our city's single largest revenue source and provides the money that we need to deliver essential city services. We will lose money if this budget bill is passed. I will repeat that. We will lose money if this budget bill is passed. We have already lost over three million dollars in annual revenue from the elimination of the estate tax, severe reductions in the local government fund allocations, and most recently, previous income tax changes implemented with the passage of House Bill Five in December of 2014. Oakwood City Council feels strongly that our residents should not have to absorb additional forced reductions in revenue, especially when the only purpose is to funnel more local money to the state of Ohio and to benefit special interest groups. At this point, I move that council adopt this resolution.
Do I have a second? The only thing that I would add is, tomorrow morning, City Manager Klopch and myself are traveling to Columbus to give testimony to the House Ways and Means Committee of the Ohio, the Ohio House. Interestingly, the, where the proposal stands now legislatively is they've removed it from the budget, but only to have hearings through the Ways and Means Committee for them to give a recommendation back to whether it gets thrown back into the budget. What always happens at the state of Ohio is they have to pass a budget by law by June 30. They normally wait until June 28th to throw everything but the kitchen sink into the budget. They then force the members of the Ohio Legislature to say, "Well, I had to vote for what was in the budget." So we're going to try to hold them accountable this time and say, "Look, you can vote for the budget," you know, "to fund the government of the state of Ohio," which, when I joined council as mayor, was about fifty billion dollars over a two-year period, it's now about seventy billion dollars. So for them to tell us that we need to, you know, cut back on local government, I tell them, they don't know what they're talking about. So I'm going to make my comments much more calm tomorrow, hopefully by nine, but I still haven't finished them yet, so I'm sort of practicing some of this on you. So we will, we will be doing that, and, and I will probably have my comments put on the Oakwood website after I get them in final form. So with that long-winded second, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm sorry?
It was very welcome.
Okay, hearing none. Laurie, would you call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation, and now we have a staff report from our Public Safety Director, Alex Bebris. Welcome, Alex.
Good evening. It's a long meeting tonight. Usually up long before eight o'clock.
We finally have an audience. We have to perform.
That's right.
Well, I'm here tonight to present to you my semi-annual update on what's going on with the Safety Department. As usual, for the first presentation for the year, I like to open up and kind of tell you where we ended 2016 in comparison to previous four years, so a five-year trend, and give you some sort of indicator of where crimes are, you know, at the crime rate, the crime level that's going on inside the community at the present time. As you can see by this graph, our apartment- As you can see by this graph, our Part I crimes, which are your major crimes, burglaries, major thefts, auto thefts, arson, things of that nature, you can see that relatively stable in comparison to 2015. And if you go back just a few years to 2012, five years ago, we're at 140. We're, I want to say 92. I think it's on the next slide, the exact number. Other major crimes you'll see went down slightly in 2016 from 2015, but have sort of trended upwards from, you know, 2012-2013 area. That is primarily in the capturing of what's classified as our fraud, forgery, and counterfeiting, and that is identity thefts. Identity theft continues to be a problem, which is not just an Oakwood-centric problem, but obviously you read in the newspaper, skimmer found on gas pump at, you know, Centerville or Miami Burger or whatever. The big problem that I have as a chief and I have with our investigative section is that those crimes are counted against where the person lives, if there's an identity theft and a fraudulent use of a credit card, et cetera. So it may be a big data breach with a major company or a gas station skimmer, but those people come to Oakwood to report their crime, and they get counted against our stats, whereas there's really not anything our residents or even our department can necessarily do about some of those things. So it just, it's one of those things, it is what it is. We'll continue to work as best we can to get those people made whole and get their reports off to the credit bureaus and off to the credit card companies and work with them when we can and assist them in every way that we can as a department. This is, like I said, digging down into the hard numbers here. You'll see that there was a slight reduction in the, this is a two-year trend, 2015-2016 comparison, you know, very, very slight decline with all major crimes, 151 in 2015 versus 149 in 2016. So relatively speaking, I would say that our crime rate is stable here inside the Our crime that we really focus upon, one of them is burglaries. The reason I have a particular, you know, interest want in that is this is, a burglary is something that, it's somebody invading your home, your privacy, taking your property. It's not just a theft from your yard or a theft from your car, which is bad enough, but this is somebody coming into your personal space, your residence, where you live, where you sleep. And we've been, we've been relatively successful in keeping a vast majority of these people outside the community. As you can see, back in 2013, we had a high of sixteen. We've sort of had a decline over the past two years, and I'll tell you, at the end is a, when I say good police work story, that kind of ties in a little bit with this. So some very good work being done as far as the officer level, some aggressive patrol, you know, doing some...